Order.
Make sure everything is a go. All right, we are ready.
We'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So our first order of business is to appoint the new board chair. We'd be looking for a nomination, I guess. Is that how we do it?
Correct.
Help.
All right, then I'll just nominate Steve Schmidt, Madam Chair.
Nomination for Steve Schmidt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Discussion? Any more nominations? Any more nominations? Any more nominations? What did I do, Andrew?
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So now we can switch, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, musical chairs, everyone.
There they go. Why is that not?
Do you want the gavel right away, or do you want to wait a while?
I have it right here for you.
Julie's a gavel. She's a gavel provider.
Now we just have to throw things at you.
That should be.
Well, I guess I don't.
Camera was.
It'd be good to go.
Practicing.
She used to just kick. You can be good.
That's gonna get really annoying. Well, welcome back.
Well, thank you. It's good to be back.
I did that purpose.
Did you?
I mean.
All right.
Twenty, in twenty twenty, I did that.
I'm glad that I'm. Feel like I'm. Thank you. So did you.
All right, well.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is appoint the vice chair. So we'll look for nominations for a vice chair.
I believe that's Danny, isn't it?
Is it me, or is it Paul?
It's you.
I would nominate Commissioner Shifelbein.
Nomination by Beth.
You want a second?
Please.
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any further discussion? A little private discussion.
Yeah.
Sidebar. Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Commissioner Shifelbein as vice chair, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations. And next item, we will need to appoint a reading clerk for 2023.
Who is it this year? I don't even know.
It was Danny this year.
Yeah, it would be Paul.
I nominate Paul, Commissioner Johnson.
Nomination of Paul Johnson by Commissioner Oberg. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Congratulations, Paul. Next item on the agenda, public comments. Anybody from the public here today that would like to make a comment? I don't see any. Next item, approve the January third, 2023 board agenda.
Let's go move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelbein.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Johnson to approve the board agenda. Any discussion, Andrew? Was there anything updated or changed that we need to discuss? Call for a vote on the all in favor of board agenda as printed, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Andrew, would you want to run us through that?
Absolutely. So on today's consent agenda, we have approval of the December twentieth, twenty twenty two board meeting minutes, approval of the social services, county and hospital accounts payable, approval of the 2023 bank depositories, approval of the 2023 electronic fund transfer authorization, appointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee, resolution designating the county website as official publication for transportation projects, a resolution designating Litchfield Independent Review as the official newspaper for publications, approval of the reappointment of Doug Hune as the county surveyor, 2023 fund transfers that are included in the annual budget, 2023 appropriations that are included in the annual budget. And that is the consent agenda.
All right. Is there any questions, anything in the consent agenda? Hearing none, there, we do have some resolutions in there. So this, I would look for a motion and a second, and then this will be a roll call vote.
Master Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifelbein. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask Corey to take the roll, please.
Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. Consent agenda through. Next up, Phil Schmals, Public Works Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Phil.
Yeah, it's Phil Schmals, Public Works Director. One item on the regular agenda for you this morning. It's to consider authorizing Public Works to set letting dates for our 2023 highway construction program. We went through our five-year plan and got approval back in October, November, so I won't go in great detail with any of these, but I can give a brief rundown of the projects and schedule that we haven't already awarded for 2023. So the first project we have on the list is our Cassaf fourteen project. That's an eight-mile-long reclaim and paving project from McLeod County up to just south of Darwin. Within the city of Darwin, we're going to be addressing that with the city in the future. So we're going to start, stop at Coran Street on the south edge of town. That's almost a three-million-dollar project. And we do have a $700,000 local road improvement program. That's a state bond fund program that we were successfully able to get some help with funding on. The other $2.2 million is expected to come out of our construction state aid balance. We have the overlay on Cassaf four. That's about two miles long, taken off from the north end of Dassel, where we are in the middle of a reconstruct project in the city of Dassel. That's about a half-million-dollar project. That'll be all stated in construction funds. We have paving of an existing gravel road on 198th Street in Ellsworth Township. That's going to take off from Greenleaf Lake, the recreational area down there, and head up north. Sorry, not on 198. It's on 240th Street. It goes up to 198. Township Road Township Project, but we're running it for the township. There is State Park Road Account Funds on that project. Almost all of it. I think there's $80,000 in township funds and about $700,000 in State Park Road Account Funds on that one. That one, the plans are done. That one's all ready to go. We're waiting for the Cassaf four and Cassaf fourteen plans to be done, and we'll tie those all together as one big paving contract. We've got a bridge replacement, replacement of bridge forty-seven, five, one, nine on 592nd Avenue in Manana Township over the North Fork of the Crow. This is a Manana Township project, Manana Township Bridge. It's going to be a pretty spendy project, right? About a million dollars. All the $10,000 of that will be funded through the Township Bridge Fund, which is, it's one of the fingers of the gas tax at the state level. So they're getting that local fund for the most part. It should be almost entirely funded by the Township Bridge Program. Another bridge on 287th Street in Forest City Township. It's the outlet, outlet of Dunn's Lake. That one, we have about $150,000 in State Park Road Account Funds for replacement of the bridge. We've been working in conjunction with the DNR to get plans finished. We're currently advertising for contractors. We'll be opening those in about two weeks. So they're getting not much local funding on that one. And then the last two are our annual routine programs for pavement marking and seal coating. About a $70,000 program for pavement markings and a half-million dollars on our chip seal program. And all those funds come out of our state aid maintenance pot. So all in all, our 23 program is about $6 million. Half of that is our local state aid allotment. The other half is various state funds that we have been able to access. No federal funds on the docket for this year. And we do have three other township paving projects that are in the works, but we'll see if we actually execute those projects this year. We've just kind of started talking with townships about plans on those.
All right. Is there any questions for Phil on any of those projects or any discussion? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize Public Works to set letting dates for the 2023 highway construction projects.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelbein. Looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion or questions? Phil, I just, a couple of questions. Is that relative to annually budgeting? And is this a aggressive year or average or?
I would call it pretty average. Just for comparison, I did bring the five-year plan so I can take a peek. Last year, we were right around $6 million in total program. You know, I see a five-point-four, six-point-five.
Okay.
Four million. So I'd say I call it pretty much average.
Okay.
It's a higher use of our state aid funds than what we might see other years. Because a lot of years in that six million will have federal dollars included.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor to authorize Public Works letting dates, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Question on the, on your payables, you had like $5,000. Must have been like for a maintenance on the, on your GIS or annual subscription agreement?
Um, I know we had time card update subscription and our permitting system update subscription.
Okay.
Those both are through RT Vision, so they.
There you go. RT Vision, I couldn't pick up.
So that'd be for our permitting system and our time card system.
Okay. That was the only question I had. Thank you.
You guys do.
You're ready?
A lot better than it was.
We're always ready.
Oh, that.
The show is coming, just not here yet.
Okay, thanks, Phil. And thank you for everything over the holidays, even Christmas Day and everything.
The guys did get a weekend this past.
I didn't even know.
They did an amazing job.
You can see if I'm making faces as you're talking, then you don't have to look. Right. That's right. Same with me.
I hit it nice over there, you know what?
All right, and I take a week in recess as the county board convenes as a ditch authority at the nine o'clock. Even though we're a little early, that's not a. And I see you brought the Bible so we can get some good reading. She's not letting go of that.
The book according to Barbara. I don't remember learning that one.
All right, county attorney, power block.
Okay, so we have before us a petition for removal of property on County Ditch thirty-five. And as you recall, we received the petition from Smith Investment Group, and the office is required to execute that and bring it before the authority. So when a petition is filed, the first thing we need to do is set a location and a hearing on the petition. And we have identified March twenty-first, 2023 at nine AM or shortly thereafter as allowed on the agenda. Do that here in the county boardroom. The county board will act as the ditch authority, and at that hearing, there will be some criteria that will need to be met by the petitioner for the drainage authority to act either on their behalf and remove the property and/or deny the petition. And so we want you to keep in mind that there are three things. Waters from the petitioner's property have been diverted from the drainage system where the property cannot significantly or regularly use the drainage system. The property is not benefited by the drainage system, and removing the property from the drainage system will not prejudice the property owners and the property remaining on the system. So those will be the three criteria that will need to be done. The burden of proof is on the petitioner to demonstrate with objective evidence that these three requirements are met. The drainage authority directs staff, namely John, to mail in notice to the petitioner, giving them the outline and also the date of the public hearing. In addition to the petitioner providing this evidence, staff believes it's beneficial for us to hire a disinterested drainage viewer to assist the smaller and less different instances, and we feel that a credible individual from the drainage association will, will benefit the decision-making of the drainage authority. So we are asking that that happen. The cost of the drainage authority hiring the viewer, conducting the hearing, and the petitioner having to provide their evidence and prepare that will all be Smith Investment Group, LLC. So at this point, I would like you to move to acknowledge that we have petitioned from Smith Investment Group for removal of property on County Ditch thirty-five to set the public hearing for March twenty-first, 2023 at nine AM or shortly thereafter as the agenda allows. Direct staff to mail petitioner letter outlining the criteria for removal and approve hiring a disinterested drainage viewer to assist the drainage authority in making a decision.
Mr. Chair, I move to acknowledge a petition from Smith Investment Group for removal of property from County Ditch number thirty-five. Set public hearing for March twenty-first, 2023 at nine AM or shortly thereafter. As agenda allows, direct staff to mail petitioner letter outlining criteria for removal and hire a disinterested drainage viewer.
I have a motion by Commissioner Oberg. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Uh, second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion?
One question. Is, is that the piece of property on the east side of County Road nine, right across the railroad tracks?
That's that property. I looked on the benefits list, too, and it was a forty-acre parcel. There's thirty-six acres that are listed as benefit on the current list.
Is it, and I, if I missed it, has there been a redetermination anytime lately or anything like that?
In the eighties.
Okay.
But, but you may recall that we did have a petition for removal prior that you did deny.
I was wondering if that was the same.
It is the same system.
It's a new name now.
So this, this is a different piece of property. So that's why we feel that with the guidance of Kale, our attorney, with the recommendation that we're coming to you, that we will be giving you the tools that you need to make a decision.
Yeah, how about viewer come in right away and just take care of it?
All right.
Yeah, this landowner enrolled it in Crepe into a permanent, that's why he's asking that.
And does that, are there any stipulations in Crepe that change any of our guidelines that we're aware about this time?
Not at this time, however, it is perpetual. And so sometimes when they do redeterminations, you will see some adjustments made. And that's why we need the viewer to understand if there were adjustments already anticipated in 1983 or where we need to go with this one. So I think we need objective evidence all the way through.
Because there's been quite a bit of work done on that particular piece of property over the last two to three years. Significant. Because that used to be underwater, as I recall.
Yep. In eighteen to nineteen, it was basically flooded.
Yeah.
And it's not totally outlined that you may be advised to have a redetermination instead of singling out a parcel here or there. We don't know that yet. Objective evidence to identify.
That would have been my next question. Is it, if a redetermination is warranted, is that just for that parcel? Or is it for the system as a whole? How does that, am I getting to March twenty-first meeting already?
You're getting into easement weeds, huh?
And I'm not sure Kale's going to find it beneficial to be here in person. And I did identify that that, that he was available. And, I mean, he does remote very nicely. So I think we'll see how it all stacks up. We are asking in the letter to the landowner that he provide the data to us early in March so that there is an opportunity for Kale and for staff to review prior to the public hearing and the findings to be sure that we do come with working tools for that public hearing, that it's not just formality, because there's a lot of expense that will go into that with mailing notices and publications and things.
And the petitioner is responsible for all of that?
They can be made responsible for all and/or the ditch authority can determine past practices that we've done all, but the ditch authority can make that determination.
So we know how many of these we've rejected versus what we've actually approved? Because it looks like there's three cases. Is that three total cases in the county history that we've removed these, this type of easements from ditch systems, or did I read that wrong?
The three criteria?
No, three actual different parcels in the past. It said parcel ID zero-six-zero-one-nine-four, zero-zero-zero-thirty-eight of forty acres removed from this, this system. Another parcel.
I believe a while back, and part of me wonders if there was actually required evidence.
Okay.
Was actually provided.
But, but my question is, are those only three times we actually approved it, or why was that listed?
I'd have to do some research on what he put in here. I didn't research.
Okay. Okay. I don't, I don't know.
Recent one you denied.
Yep, okay.
But there were other instances in the file, and I'd have to look back in the history to see what happened on this since nineteen, nineteen eighty-three.
It'd be just nice to know why we approved these versus that one, so we're not setting any other precedent.
Sure. We'll, we'll do that research.
It was in the packet part, so I don't know.
Right, it's part of his petition, the, the data that he provided.
Gotcha.
And part of me wonders back then, too, is did they hire a viewer to determine that, or did they just make a judgment call on what was provided from the landowner?
Gotcha. And I'm assuming Kale goes over this piece, right?
Received all of this from, from us. We brought him in on this very early simply because it feels like it's a continuation of other issues that we've had in County thirty-five, and having his help right at the beginning was important.
All right.
That was good.
Anything else? Hearing none. We already have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
That concludes what we have for the drainage authority.
All right, thank you. And we will adjourn as County Ditch Authority and reconvene as county board.
Yeah. Lot more benefit.
And that moves us up to county administrator.
So the one item I have for you to approve today, the approval of your appointments, your committee appointments for next year. I have, I'm going to pull up the the spreadsheet that was included in the packet, so we have it on the screens in front of us. You certainly can, the only changes that I am recommending that we make are elimination of the COVID Policy Committee. Hasn't met in, in nearly a year. We're more or less beyond the point of requiring that committee anymore. And looking to add our Public Works Director to the Class and Comp Committee. Other than that, I'm not recommending any other changes. It's, it's really up to you to determine how you want to make other adjustments.
Julie's going on to man's side, isn't she?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw that request. There's a lot of things going on, and I want to stay there for, there's some things happening right now that I think it's important I be there, so. I have a question about two things. The HRA.
Yeah.
I had discussed this. First it was Paul, now it's me. It interferes at times with other meetings. So I've asked Andrew to sit in, and he has. And I think when we looked at this, it does not have to be a commissioner. It's not a voting member. It's strictly advisory. So I have asked if Andrew would take that, because number one, a lot of times there are questions I have to direct back to Andrew anyway. So I don't know if everyone's all right with that, or, I mean, I'd be glad to go when I can, but there's too many times I've had to miss, and I think that's what happened with Paul also.
Yeah, I had a direct conflict.
Yeah, and I have hospitals sometimes and other things.
They meet on Mondays at noon or one o'clock?
At one fifteen.
The Housing Redevelopment Authority.
Yeah, HRA.
Is that conflict with you? Not too bad. Is that?
Generally, I can make it work.
Is it local, too?
Yeah, it's at the Family Services Office.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if you're not opposed to it.
I'm, I'm fine with it. I'd have no.
And I mean, if, if there's times.
You don't want us?
I can go, I will, but.
I can still kick the chair.
I think what Andrew and I discussed was it's important that we overs, that we know what's going on. Maybe you can explain it better than me, but it's a part of something we need to be a part of as an advisory. But he's kind of.
Yeah.
Probably the guy that should be doing it.
Yeah, the, the HRA is a, is a creature of the county board. You know, in the past, this is something that previous board has established. And so there is responsibility there that you have over that authority, although they are autonomous in a lot of ways under, you know, federal and state statutes. So it, it is important for us to have some connection there, and, and I'm more than happy to provide that connection.
Does the EDA have any interaction with HRA, or you do?
No.
The HRA's full function is to manage properties owned by the HRA for low-income housing.
I think there's been times when they've had questions, right, Steve?
Yeah.
Because I've asked them to call you, Carla, or whoever to call you.
Yeah, I've met with Rob, Carla, and.
Ron.
Ron. There you go. I wanted to call Robert. I've met with them on different occasions. They've, I know they've requested things of the EDA or, or sent things up. But as far as a direct working relationship.
Yeah. There was a property that they were looking at at one point that, you know, we had conversations with, with Lisa from EDA as well. And so there's partnership that occurs there, but it, it's not that direct partnership. There was probably a little bit more overlap when the EDA still owned those low-income.
Right.
Properties. Now that the EDA does not, there really isn't overlap.
And they got some of the COVID funding for some needs, so that was a good thing, I think, that.
Yeah, we updated some.
So that's all right with everyone. I don't know. I mean, I can stay on there with Andrew, but I think he's going to be the go-to. Because I just, and I always feel bad when I can't get there.
They probably, I mean, that's kind of like Grove City Care. They really appreciate having a commissioner.
They do. And they, they appreciate Andrew, too, I know.
You know, I, I mean, so I mean, just having a commissioner listed is probably.
Maybe put us both on, or however. That's all right. But I'm going to leave it in your ballpark.
Usually when it's an issue with them anyway, it comes to budget anyway, and then you're on budget, and then you can actually inform whoever the budget committee is.
There's been several times when they've had questions, and I say, well, either you call Andrew, I will, because.
It's really, the only time it's really come up ever is when we saw them through budget in terms of what we're going to take care of.
The air conditioner, furnaces, maintenance.
And they receive an appropriation.
Yep.
As well to help cover some of the operating costs.
Yep.
All right. One, I have one, too. Central Minnesota jobs and training. I have a hard time with. That one is the, only meets second Friday of the last month of each quarter, and they're pretty much a hundred percent virtual, so. Anybody has that? A lot of my AMC meetings are going to be on Fridays, so it's going to conflict again. So that one's kind of a relatively easy one. And we, I don't know why, but we've never had an alternate on that one, but.
Maybe that's what we should go, or do you just want to get off it?
It doesn't matter. I mean, but I don't, I don't do it justice, is what I'm.
That's what I don't like either one of them. So they only meet.
Four times a year, then?
Four times a year, and.
They have, they have other meetings you can go into, but the joint powers board only.
And if it's not virtual, where do they meet? It's at Buffalo or something?
Uh, no. Oh, give me a minute. Not St. Michael. It's, uh, it's on Highway ten. Becker.
Becker.
But I've, I haven't been down there in.
Yeah.
Couple of years, so. That would be on that. Julie?
I keep mentioning mine.
Rolls off the top.
I mean, I, I'm normally, I'm normally available on Fridays if it's Zoom. I guess I could do it.
Or do we want to do an alternate?
Or I could be.
And I'd be the alternate and do that way?
That would be fine.
Okay.
So Beth, you'd be primary, and Steve would be.
If that's fine with everyone. Then I have a quick question, too, and I'm not trying to open up a can of worms. I think it's important that everybody learn the budgeting process. I've been here ten years and never been on a budget. And what I had in mind, and this is put out there, is the, the chair and the vice chair be on the budget committee, which wouldn't change a thing this year. So, but I just think it's something for us to think about. It doesn't have to be decided today, but I think if you go through the process, maybe you understand the process. And it's nothing that you guys do a good job. It's not that. So that's just an idea I'd like to put out there. It wouldn't be me for a while, but next year it would be Paul and you. So you'd always have somebody there two years, right? Does that make sense to you guys, or no?
I know other counties do it that way. Everybody's got. I know other counties do it that way. Everybody's got a, it seems like every county's got a different way they put people on committees.
Some counties don't really use committees. Some use a lot of committees and so it's.
And actually, the process has changed since Andrew came here. It used to be, it used to be pretty, pretty labor intensive, I think, but. So I'm just putting it out there for something to think about and whatever anybody else thinks, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm fine with my committees and I will be willing to take on the other ones, so.
All right, any, is there any? Julie want more or?
Julie, it's hard to get Julie to take on new art.
Haven't heard that since mom said it.
And these AMC committees, we've all kept the same on those for a while. Um, I don't get to enough of the meetings. I know that. I wish they would do more virtual, but.
Well, I'm chair of public safety at AMC, so I'm.
Are you? You're moving up the ladder there, Steve.
I, I need to stay on public safety.
And I, and I'm happy to be where I am. I just uh, I need to make an effort.
If someone wants whatever I'm on.
What are you on?
Me, because I want it, because I could guarantee you I am not a great representative.
What are you on Danny? Do you know?
General government is something you'd wanna be, I think I just went on it when I went on it, but I didn't know.
Paul is one for everybody.
Yeah, no, no, what I'm saying is if, knowing that Paul goes to a lot of meetings, if that was one that you'd be more interested in what you're on.
We don't do, do we do alternates on these?
We do not do alternates on these.
Well, what's difficult about that is, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry. We meet at the same time normally, so if we're down at a conference, I go to a social cert, you know? If I can't be there, sometimes I ask someone else.
The general government people and wanting to be, get that flavor at all or not, because I don't do anything essentially.
Trouble is Danny, it takes you a year or two to
really figure out what you're doing there. I'd imagine so, that's what I.
I mean, cause you have the group, you know, you always have a group within a group. Okay, here's the whole group of my infrastructure. But then there's the group inside of there that kinda runs the whole show, you see?
I assume that, but I just was putting it out there if you wanted.
You kinda gotta learn the AMC staff.
And here's the other.
They're there to support you.
I'm, I'm good.
But here's the other thing, not every county attends every AMC.
Might if I knew more.
They don't. So it's not, what I'm saying is, it's important.
Cause you're full-time on infrastructure and transportation.
You get, I bet all the emails for the central government.
I know, and they're right. Hello, no before.
So you are aware typically when, when we attend these conferences and they have these policy committees, I will often attend the general government because a lot of it is that general high level taxation and CPA and what's going on with MCIT and insurance, not insurance, the pension and things like that. So I often will attend that to make sure that we have a, a sense of what's going on there if no one else is there for it, so we're covered.
Okay.
And the environment, natural resources, when they put on any seminars, I attend those or the individual classes, not the meeting for that group. But like I went to the uh, the shoreline management one that they put on last in December, so.
This is the one.
You know, I try to get to other meetings if they.
I only threw it out there if you were interested in terms of that part and think, thought, oh, he's not doing his part. I wish I was part of this. Cause I just can't.
Well, see, I go to the one with um, uh, yours, where you're gonna be chair. Sunday night, I always come to that one.
Well, that's MRC.
Yeah, that's MRC.
That's not, I'm not gonna be chair.
You could be chair.
No, uh, and, and, and a lot of the AMC meetings, a lot of their platforms overlap. So if there's something that's important on public safety, a lot of times falls into general government, so. Some of the information is duplicated or at least integrated. And uh, so we do get a pretty good balance that way, but, but it is good. There's, there's a lot to, lot to learn and lot to know there as well, so. Is there any other discussion?
Um, just because we've talked a little bit about MRC uh, in the past, we wanna confirm that, that we wanna continue on with that.
And, and I would make a comment on that. I did get a, an email already, next Monday is a meeting. And this new uh, consultant firm that I heard is about ten steps ahead already of where anybody else was, so I I would be in favor of staying in a year to, cause there's quite a bit of restructuring going on.
When does that decision have to be made, whether we?
Oh, I think the bill is probably here.
Bill around now.
Yeah, the bill comes about now. It's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
And what they're looking at per year. And they're hopeful, um, because of past leadership and some of the integrations there, there were some counties that were kinda holding back and they're assuming they would go more to join. So there's a possibility of it becoming a little more economical too as they get more members. There's thirty-four counties right now that are members of MRC. So, and you are a delegate on that to alternate, so.
Now that they have removed the death penalty, I think we should stay at least another year.
Yeah, to elaborate on Paul's point at the meeting at AMC, the annual meeting for MRC. Um, we went through platform changes and they mailed, emailed them out about a week ahead. And as you went through there, they had us rate what items were high priority, low priority and and I was kinda shocked to learn that the death penalty, supported a death penalty was on their platform amendments that we were able to.
I don't know if that's all bad.
From the.
Brand is giving me the.
I just was kinda shocked that was in there. It's like, okay.
I, I have a, if we're done with, I have a question. The class and comp committee, you're adding someone and you're not taking anyone off. I'm just wondering, why?
Uh, well, as we've kind of gone through the process over the past year or so, um, you know, kinda felt to be good to bring an additional voice in there, another one of our larger departments. That was the reason. There was previously an additional person on there that came off and wasn't removed, so we're kinda filling the C pack.
Okay, that was my question.
Julie, anything else?
Nope. Good.
Everybody good?
Do we need a motion to approve this?
We will need a motion.
Can I just recap the changes that were made, just so I can have that? So we're eliminating the COVID policy committee and adding Phil to cla- class and comp. Adding Andrew to HRA but keeping Beth on.
Alternate kind of.
And um, changing the CMJTS, we're putting Steve as an alternate and adding Beth as primary. Is that correct?
Julie Braddison on Humane Society.
Nope.
That's right. I withdrew that request. Ooh, she said.
I so moved to approve the committee in twenty twenty-three.
Fun way to move a meeting along.
And I'll second that to keep everything going.
Motion by Commissioner Braddison, second by Commissioner Chief Obine to approve the twenty twenty-three committee appointments. Any further discussion?
I should have brought this up earlier, but Prime Health, I haven't got to a lot of the meetings. I'll try harder. Now I'm training somebody over here and I hope this is. Should we have an alternate? You're the alternate and that's good enough, huh? Okay, that was my question. Go ahead with the vote.
All right. All in favor of twenty twenty-three committee appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Right.
And then? Do we need a motion to close?
We will need a motion to close.
And reopen.
Yes.
Gotcha.
I so moved that we.
Enter into closed session, is that what you're?
Please.
Statute.
Yeah. To read all of that or?
No, no.
Okay.
Please. You don't have to please, it's just please, right? We never said please the best.
I have a motion.
Why start now?
I have a motion by Commissioner Braddison to go into closed session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Chief Obine. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And as, just as a reminder, we will only be talking about the subject data of County Administrator Andrew Blackson regarding his performance evaluation. Anything beyond that, we'd have to open up the meeting and so we're gonna stay strictly to that conversation.
Any opposed?
And does the county attorney stay in the room for his evaluation? Just, just to watch us?
Be no discussion. Let me remind you, no discussion about the Patrick Viking game.
That was, so why did you bring that up?
Make sure that nobody discusses it.
If he wants to bring it up.
Just so you. Just so you know, I shut it off in the first quarter, never to turn it on again, so.
I did not bring it up.
Is there a ballgame this week?
Even a clock.
All right.
We are going to the closed session, we will be strictly seeking to that.
Okay. Should we leave the door open or closed?
We close it for that, but I think we need to vote first to go in.
Okay.
Meaning we just stick to what you sent us and.